All right, it is 5:30 on May-
8/20/25, I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the Morton County Commission to Order. Is our first item will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do the roll call. Start on that end this time. Commissioner Morrell.
Here.
Commissioner Tocash.
Here.
Commissioner Buckley.
Here.
Commissioner Zackmeyer.
Yes.
And myself, Commissioner Beam. All Commissioners are present tonight. We also have Auditor Roan up here at the front desk with us, State's Attorney Copy, and Sheriff Kirkmire in the back of the room. Next will be the agenda. I will add under four, not four A, Sheriff Kirkmire with an LEC expense.
Four A?
Yeah, we'll call it four A. Is there any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the previous meeting of April 22nd, 2025, regular meeting of the Morton County Commission.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the April 22nd, 2025, regular meeting of the Morton County Commission. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next, Commissioner Tocash, you had bills this month.
Yeah, Commissioners, I've reviewed the bills for this month. Everything seemed to be in order, with the exception of we were, there were some credit card disputes on, for the Parks and Rec Department that they had found, so we just pulled that out. We'll approve that at the next meeting. Everything else looks good, though. And so I move that we approve the monthly bills and payroll.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Zackmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. All right, we got through the regular stuff. We'll move right into our agenda. First up tonight is Mr. Earhart, our Morton County Veteran Service Officer.
Just making sure this is on. Commissioners, Chairman Beam, my name is Mitch Edmond, the County Veteran Service Officer. I'm coming before you today to request permission for some out-of-state travel and to give you a little update on some projects that we're doing in our office. So in the package that you have, this is request for out-of-state travel to our National County Veteran Service Officer Conference. This year, it's in Louisville, The very rough agenda that's attached is mostly the, what I'd call the extracurricular things that they do at the conference. Conference normally runs from Monday to Friday noonish is what the normal, the normal conference runs to. It'll be interesting this year with a change in leadership in the federal government and a change in leadership in the VA. We normally get the, the under secretaries for benefits and cemeteries, we get the secretary, the VA, they normally all come to these conferences. So it'll be interesting what they have to say to about five or 600 county veteran service officers. So the conference runs from July 14th to the 18th. You see the estimated cost of the out-of-state travel on the request. All these things are budgeted in my, in my yearly budget. And then you see the recommended motion for approval and pending any questions about this that you may have. That's all I have to say about that.
A little Forrest Gump there. Commissioners, have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the out-of-state travel for a county veteran service officer to attend the National Association of County Veterans Service Officers Conference in Louisville, Tennessee. Tennessee is TN, by the way.
It's Kentucky, by the way.
Oh, it's Kentucky. So it's K instead of a T. From July 13th through July 18th of 2025. And along with that, also acknowledging that there's a lot of wealth of information that comes from these conferences that we can incorporate in what we do for our outreach within Morton County.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to allow the out-of-state travel for the county veteran service officer to attend the National Association of County Veterans Service Officers in Louisville, Kentucky from July 13th through July 18th, 2025. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have two projects I just kinda wanna give you a heads up on. The first one is, towards the end of last year, the State Department of Veterans Affairs Director, his name's Lonnie Wagon, asked me to go out to the state penitentiary to assist veterans that are in the penitentiary. They, of course, don't have access to internet, don't have access to any outside anything. So most, some of what I do is just answer some questions. The other things that we try to do is, there's a person in Fargo who comes out normally, who helps that, get them enrolled in healthcare, so that when they get out of the state pen, they're kinda set up, at least they have healthcare, and if they're entitled to any benefits, we try to help that, help start that process. So whether that's, you know, gets them, whether they served in Gulf War era, so they'd be eligible for benefits from that standpoint. And most of them, you know, they hear a lot of rumors about stuff that's going on, and they have no way of backing that up. So I help them with that aspect of it. So that's just, I go to this, I try to go to the state pen, give or take, four to five weeks, and then MRCC go out there and help those veterans out there too. Some of the veterans, when they get out of that process, they come to the halfway house in Mandan. Sometimes they go to other halfway houses throughout the state, and we can just transfer their file right to that county veteran service officer. And so that they, they are not starting from scratch, as soon as they show up to the place wherever they're gonna be. That's one project. The other project is, the State Department of Veterans Affairs hired a company to do some data mining to try to find veterans and surviving spouses. One of the things that I've always said when I started is, my biggest fear that there's a surviving spouse out there who's eligible for stuff, and they have no idea that they're eligible for anything because they're not involved in a legion or the VFW or anything. So they don't know when laws get changed, because lots of laws been changed since, even since I hired, was hired in 2018. That now makes a whole big group of people eligible for stuff. So that's one demographic that we have, is surviving spouses that may be out there. Another demographic is veterans who may be out there. Used to be, way back in the day, that a veteran moved back home, and they went to the county recorder, and they recorded their DD-214 in the county. And forever, it was on record. No longer the case, there's no requirement for a veteran to do that. Many times, veterans lose their DD-214, and we just don't know, there's no requirement for them to come and see me. So they live in our community, we just don't know they're there. So they have, there's a lot of pages, 130, I think, pages of possible veterans that are broken down into, priority group one is people who have multiple claims to be a veteran throughout the internet, whatever that entails. Group two is veteran, is people who've said once that they are a veteran. And group three is people who do veteriny stuff. I don't know exactly what that is, but that may be like a post that somebody had about, you know, welcome home Vietnam veterans or something like that. I know exactly what that is. But we're starting with the surviving spouses. I think those are the most important group to get a hold of. In this list we have, they don't have phone numbers, they don't have addresses, they just have kind of names. So we're eventually gonna end up doing a little bit of cold calling to people and say, hey, are you meet this category? Is there something that, you know, we can help you with? And try to understand what their situation is, to see if we can get them into the office and get them benefits that they may have earned, they just don't know about. And then, if you have any questions about that, also, that's all I have to say about that.
Commissioners, have any follow-up questions for Mitch?
Mitch, I have a question with the, with the data mining. And again, we talked about this earlier too, but the, is Lonnie getting all the county veteran service officers to work this? So he's basically just trying to pare off the list without any knowledge of who's where, who's what?
Nope, they know, they know which county they're in.
Okay.
So they've, they've separated them by county.
Okay.
And each county veteran service officer has their own list of possible surviving spouses and then possible veterans.
Okay.
So everybody's, everybody's working through that.
So be able to draw a direct connection right away then?
Yeah, and I mean, obviously, we don't need to know the people we already know.
Right.
So they deleted all those people from the list, because if they're already in our records, we don't need to know that they're in the community, we already know that they're there. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mitch.
All right, moving on, Natalie.
Good evening, Commissioners and Auditor Roan. Good to see Commissioner Buckley among us. Our first item is the SHOK subdivision. This is in the east half of Section 35, Township 139 North, Range 82 West, located along County Road 82. The Mandan landfill is part of this. So Mandan landfill, and then this property here. So the two lots here, these are exempt agricultural parcels. They really wouldn't have to go through this subdivision process. The only reason that they are coming through is so that the county can accept the dedication of right-of-way corridor for County Road 82 as well as utility easements. And then, this was an existing industrial lot, and the corner of it is just extending slightly to this right-of-way corridor. And the right-of-way corridor just wasn't there before. So this is 162.92 acres, no zone changes. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and I can take any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions on the SHOK, yeah, SHOK or is it SHOK subdivision? SHOK or shock?
SHOK, SHOK.
Okay, SHOK. Heard them both when I was in school, so. Yeah, it's about as bad as Beam. Commissioners have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the final plot of the short-form subdivision known as SHOK subdivision for the purpose of accepting a dedication of public right-of-way and utility easements.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the final plot of the short-form subdivision known as the SHOK subdivision. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is the IDA Tree subdivision. This is in the southwest quarter of Section 11, Township 140 North, Range 89 West, located about a half mile north of Haymarsh. So this is east of Hebron. The applicants are Brian and Cheryl Wery. This is a 6.42 acre, single residential lot. So just a very straightforward dividing a residential lot from the quarter section. They're dedicating the right-of-way, the entire corridor, and a utility easement. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval, and I can take any questions.
Got it, there it is. Thank you.
Yeah, but you can't see.
Commissioners, have any questions or comments or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Brian and Cheryl Wery request for a final plot of a short-form subdivision known as IDA Tree subdivision on approximately 6.2 acres in the southwest quarter of Section 11, Township 140 North, Range 88, Range, excuse me, 89 West.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the final plot of the short-form subdivision known as the IDA Tree subdivision. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is the Stern Fourth subdivision. This is in the southwest quarter of Section 24, Township 139 North, Range 84 West. This is located about a mile and three-quarters southeast of Sweet Prior Lake. The applicants are Rick and Kathy Stern and a number of other applicants. So this is a two-lot subdivision. They are, so this is, was a non-conforming lot. They're just bringing it through the subdivision process and rezoning to residential. It has a residence on it, and then creating a second residential lot that they're gonna build a residence on. They will be combining the rest of this quarter through an outlot in order to make this abide by our conditions in our long-range plan. So again, two lots, two new residential lots in that quarter, and Planning and Zoning Commission, Commission recommended approval, and I can take any questions.
Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the final plot of the short-form subdivision known as Stern Fourth subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential on lots two and three. As the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 comprehensive plan.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the final plot of the short-form subdivision known as Stern Fourth subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
I'm gonna be saying a lot of things, but I just put up a visual so that we have, remember where we are. So this is on 1806, right by Square Butte Road, Honey Hills First and Honey Hills Second. This is the stormwater management plan diagram. This, both of these subdivisions were approved by County Commission in August of 2023. There are 22 lots in Honey Hills One, 24 lots in Honey Hills Two, for a total of 46 lots. This stormwater plan, both sides of the road work together. It's all part of one stormwater system. This was a large development by Morton County standards. The stormwater system was more elaborate than, and involved than what we usually see, because it was a bigger development. The county, we wanted to make sure that we have a very clear understanding of who maintains these stormwater facilities, because that's not typical for the county to maintain these. The developers team and county staff worked together to put together a really, I think, solid set of covenants and HOA bylaws to make sure that that HOA would be able to assess or collect monies from lot owners to put in reserves so that they could do their own maintenance on this. So when this subdivision, or these two subdivisions went through the approval process, through road commission, planning and zoning commission, water board, county commission, we had an indication from North Dakota DOT that they approved of this stormwater plan, and it was acceptable. So then the county did approve these subdivisions in 2023. Then come around to December of 2024, so more than a year later, NDDOT staff sent our commissioners, I'm not sure if it was just our chairman or all the commissioners, an email saying, yes, we approve of this stormwater plan, but we're gonna stray from our typical hydraulic permitting process. And they included a set of conditions. They wanted the developer in Morton County to co-sign this agreement in order to process that drainage permit, because the, as part of the stormwater plan, there is a ditch block on the, that has been there for a long time on the west side of 1806, and part of the plan was to remove that and to reroute stormwater down the ditch of 1806 and route it across. So again, DOT staff, they said they were fine with it, then they changed their mind. So in January, after having a few conversations among the commissioners, myself, the county engineer, myself, had a conversation with a number of staff members from DOT. We let them know that we had these covenants, that we had a pretty robust legal arrangement. They, they knew that we had covenants for this development, but they had never seen them before. So we sent those along, thinking maybe DOT staff would see them and realize that they were fairly robust and be okay with that. At the end of that conversation, DOT staff said that they would confer internally. So this is end of January. And then March 11th, DOT sent a denial letter to the developer's engineer saying that the drainage permit had been denied. So then, the developer brought this concern to the water board, the Morton County Water Resource District Board meeting at the end of April, so it was last week, to ask for assistance. I think DOT is looking for a public entity to take on this liability. They don't wanna take it on themselves in case something were to happen to the right-of-way or downstream properties in the event that there's some unforeseen flow coming out of the stormwater system that might negatively impact the right-of-way. So DOT wants to make some public entity responsible for that liability. So the water, the water board, again, discussed it at their April 30th meeting and wrote a letter requesting that this go to the county commission and respectfully request that the county co-sign the application for the drainage permit. So again, the drainage permit was denied by DOT. The developer is looking to reapply, hoping, again, this is their request to this board, requesting that the county co-sign this application as the DOT had requested in December, with the condition that the county take on liability for stormwater maintenance and to mitigate any damages that might take place in the right-of-way or downstream to private properties. So that is very fast, that's a lot of information. I am gonna let the applicant's engineer and the developer talk about potential, basically what is, what is the money amounts we're looking at in terms of revenues and liabilities and stormwater maintenance and so forth, if, if the chairman wants to entertain that. Otherwise, I can summarize it best I can. So, but if you, yeah, I can, I can answer questions too, if you have questions.
Does anybody have any concerns or wanna listen to some of that?
I think it's fair.
Okay, and we can let them talk?
Okay. Yeah, and I would say, you know, certainly, you're running the meeting, but focus would be, what are the impacts that the county would be looking at, you know, liability to, to the county, to kinda give you a picture. And then I'll be back up for questions.
Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Abe Almer with Independent Land Surveying and Engineering. I'm one of the engineers that helped with the stormwater management report. I helped design the roads and everything through this, through the process for the Honey Hills development. So, working with the state, they said we had a great stormwater plan. What we did in our stormwater plan, because of the concerns about that ditch block rerouting that water to the east, we could take that water, compensate that water in our stormwater ponds on the west, and take that ditch block out. That significantly decreases the water on the east side that goes through the neighboring property downstream. And, and I know that they've, they expressed concern through those meetings as well, at that time, that they had a lot of water coming through. We were significantly decreasing that amount of water to that property. Through the process, we had to do some redesigns because of wetlands, different things like that. This is our current report that you see on the screen right now. Through the process, we've, we got through all the state review, and they wanted the drainage permit signed by the developer. They actually sent it originally to the developer just to sign, and the developer signed, sent back, and then the state came back asking if we could have Morton County sign on as well. So, we got that far. With, with what Natalie said, there was some discussion in January about the county, having the county sign on to the permit with state representatives and probably four or five state employees there. And then, back in March, we got the denial, the denial letter. The main thing in the discussion that I took from the discussion is the purpose of the state asking the county to sign on to the permit, co-sign the permit, is just an assurance to the state that if this stormwater system is not taken care of by the HOA, or the HOA defaults, that somebody's in place to try to take care of it if something happens to that HOA. Like Natalie said, there is an HOA in place, but if something, or, and that HOA and the stormwater drainage permit does require the HOA to do yearly inspections and, and reports, and report that to the county as well, to make sure that things are taken care of, minor. Typically, you see little minor things here and there, little washouts, maybe some sediment. That's the main issue. They don't, the state was mainly saying, if nobody maintains those, we could see those ponds filling up. And then, the stormwater plan is, as, how we design it with the flows of water doesn't work the way we designed it. And that could cause more water downstream. They don't wanna be responsible for that, so they wanna put that back on us as the developers in the county.
Commissioners have any, excuse me, Commissioners have any questions for Abe?
Yeah, I've, I've got a number of questions, Mr. Almer. I've, one of these, was there, did this project ever get a state permit from the DOT?
Yes, we did, from the district to create all of our approaches, to do all that. They actually were, the district was actually telling us, asking us when we're taking out the ditch block because they thought it was already approved by the other entities. So there's two entities in the state that we have to go through for approval, the district and the bridge division. The bridge division is actually the storm water division. We got word that our storm water was approved and the permit was coming. For, the permit is really just to remove the ditch block, to work on state right-of-way, to take that ditch block out. However, that ditch block, by removing it, changes the water flow and could increase downstream, uh, downstream to the cattle crossing down further. But we compensated for that water in another pond downstream, so it wouldn't, wouldn't uh hinder that cattle crossing culvert.
So is it, so is it fair to say that this project went forward without all the permits that you needed? And I'm not trying to catch on something, I'm just trying to understand it because we're, if it's, if there's a permit that was pulled back, that's one thing. If there was a permit that was never issued, that's a different issue.
No, we were under the assumption we were working under.
Under the assumption?
Through, through the district. We did not realize until last fall that they wanted a separate permit for the ditch block removal. In typical situations, all we do for a per, or all we get for approval on storm water from the state is an email saying we're good with, we're good with it, you're good to go. And we got that email. After the fact, they came back and stated they wanted this drainage permit signed by the developer. And then they came back a couple of months later and said, that's not good enough, we'd like to have the county sign on to that permit.
So do they recognize any responsibility as far as giving you the okay and then pulling it back?
It's the state. It's the state. They don't really, they came back, they really, no.
And Mr. Chair, um, to address Commissioner Tocash's latest question, I've been in that position with another municipality in North Dakota where I do work with too, same regard. They will never, I won't say they won't take ownership, but um it's rare for them to announce that they took ownership.
Another question I have is, the way I'm reading this, and Natalie thinks for your, your summarizing it up, but the way I'm reading it is we're not, the county isn't just talking about the liability of, you know, things surrounding the ditch block. At this point, the state, the DOT has recognized the county, recognized the county as taking care of all of the storm water system within the development. That's, that's my take on it.
Correct. It's, it's pretty much the fact that if the HOA defaults and doesn't take care of their system, that could hinder the storm water flow's design. So that's, that's what the state would like to see is to make sure that the county sign on and approves the storm water.
Has an HOA been formed?
Yes.
And that's been registered with the state?
They have to sign.
Yeah. Uh, has there been, uh, the other stipulation that was in there from 2023 was a schedule of, of uh maintenance activities?
Yeah.
That's all, that's all on file?
Yep.
Yeah.
There should be a copy of the bylaws and the storm water agreement in your packet along with the covenants as well. It's a very long packet, but I've read them a couple of times.
So, at, this was discussed at the water board also. Wade, if you have a, a way to clarify it a little bit for Commissioner Tocash, that'd be great.
Yeah, apologize for dragging the meeting out here, but I did look for the minutes on the water board meeting and I wasn't able to find those at all. So, they're not published yet, so.
Okay.
Yes, Chairman Vane, Commissioners, uh, good evening, Wade Bachmeyer, Chairman of the uh Morton County Water Resource District. Like Natalie said, the uh developer did bring this request to the water board. And we met last Wednesday, had quite a lengthy discussion on it and the, the question that was finally asked was what, what is the worst-case scenario? So the worst-case scenario would be the homeowners association goes defunct. There's no funds to cure any defects in the storm water management plan. And at that point, what would happen? By default, it would come back to the county anyway and most likely land on, on our desk, on the water resource district desk. So we didn't think that the request from uh North Dakota Department of Transportation was all that onerous. Well, however, our attorney did not think that the Water Resource District has the ability to, so to speak, step in and, and sign this agreement. But Abe touched on another thing, and to me, that is probably the crux of the whole thing. By not removing that ditch block, it puts additional water on the east side of the road and across another landowner that we've already had many complaints from. So, removing the ditch block keeps the water on the west side of the highway in a much larger drainage system that was already designed to take that water on. Pushing, keeping the roadblock in, ditch block in, pushes that water over to the east side of the highway, which will require some additional revamping, I'm assuming, revamping for the storm water detention pond on the east side of the road. Again, most likely opening up additional complaints from, from that downstream landowner. But ultimately, if the homeowners association goes defunct, I would assume it's going, going to fall back on the county and most likely on the water board anyway. And at that point in time, we'd have to go in, figure out what the cure is, start, uh, create a special assessment district and, and, and pay for it.
There's the key, I believe, is if it does fall back to us, we don't pay for it. We form that special assessment district and they have to cover it. I think if I'm correct in reading that, and it was in the uh agreements with the homeowners association and everything too, that's all written in there. They sign that when they start.
Correct. But, so I don't know if that clarified your question, Mr. Tocash?
We wouldn't be paying for it.
Yeah, yes, it helps quite a bit. Uh, and, and quite frankly, I didn't, I didn't know this is in the board packet and I haven't had a chance to read through the, the.
That's Natalie's job.
If there's bylaws to the homeowners agreement, so um as, as we have to do, I put trust in others that this is done properly and that we're not saddling the county with a lot of liability. Because uh if I'd, if I'd asked for a show hand of people that aren't involved with this, if they want to take on additional liability, I'm not sure if I'd get many people that would agree with me.
I would agree with that.
And, you know, we, we started this and, and, you know, 2023 and everyone thought that permits were in place and everything was going good and, and specific questions about liability. And here we are, now we're saddled with a liability. So, is there, is there any chance that we can go back to the DOT or the governing body and say, Morton County doesn't want to sign this, we want to move forward with the permit request anyway?
Uh, that, that question I would have to yield to the engineer, sir.
And I understand your point that, you know, we could eventually be saddled with it anyway. I, I get that point.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Tocash, it, it, right now, um, if we don't get a signature on it, I'm going to say that we're redesigning. Uh, right now, we've already had that discussion. We've had verbal discussions with the state. How about we reword the permit to try to say that uh the, the HOA is formed and per this document, uh, if they default, the, the county has the right to special assess, that sort of thing. Uh, and we still got the denial permit, or the denial of the permit. Uh, right now, their, their stance is, right now, as it stands with the state bridge department, they're, uh, it's denied, we have to redesign. What we're asking pretty much is, let's try to see if you guys will allow, be, sign on to the permit to see if we can stay with our current design the way it is. Otherwise, like Wade said, I have to figure out how to keep that ditch block in place and compensate for that water another way. So, right now, I'd say if we don't sign, if I don't have, if we don't get your support, we're going to redesign. And a lot of the stuff is in place that would not change. Uh, to be honest, it, it's a ditch and, and I have to evaluate two ponds in, in that system for that area. But we might have to increase pipe size on the east side to allow that extra water from that ditch block to go to that southern end.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other question?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, are you done? Any other?
No.
Okay. I drove through that area and I remember the application coming, coming forward years ago, but I drove through there yesterday, I think it was, and looking at the drainage system. You can tell it's all integral, it's all intended to operate the way it is designed to. And that ditch block is definitely a block of flow. And I question, why would the DOT not want to uh remove that? Obviously, they have, they have a reason to leave that in there for whatever that might be, we don't know. But that, leaving that ditch block in there, it is exactly serving as that purpose, is blocking the flow of water that is intended by the engineer studying the engineer flows. So it just, honestly, it just befuddles me. Um, been through that case before in a previous life, working, even working with FEMA. Yes, when they send correspondence, it's, it's a simple email, that's all it is. Just verification, yes, we agree with what you're doing and that's all. Is there an opportunity to pressure that as an official body coming back to them? The opportunity is there, will it budge? Likely not.
No.
So, but again, looking at the whole configuration, you got a homeowners association, same regard as a condo association, something happens, they're there for that same purpose of making sure that the follow-through is there. If that dissolves, it follows on the developer. If that dissolves, it follows on the municipality, just like anything else would.
And, and I think the word liability in there is not really the correct word. It's being used.
Right. And I don't know if there's another word.
Yeah, I don't know.
Substitute, but.
And Commissioner Tocash, I did ask the same questions. I talked to a couple of people and had the explanation. It, it follows through in my mind. It doesn't mean I, I'm not telling you which way to go, but um, yeah, it's, I had the same questions you did.
No, and I, and I recognize that. I, you know, and my point is, it is a liability. The problem right now is we've got a development that's partially done and we need to do something with it.
Yep.
And uh, and I, and I think it's a great suggestion to possibly go back as an official body and, and make a request. Again, don't know if it'll, it'll have any, any weight or not, but uh, I just uh struggle talking to my constituents and, and uh, you know, explaining why we're, we're accepting liability. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I could um just answer Commissioner Tocash's question about the HOA and all that. Um, we put the developers' legal counsel and county staff and um, there was a lot of effort and fine-tooth combing of those covenants and the HOA bylaws. Um, they, I think, were done very well and essentially making it so that they can't change them, certain parts without county approval, um, making sure that there's no protest if the HOA dissolves and the county has to do emergency maintenance, you know, to special assess back and things like that. Um, so those were done well. What I will say is, um, it has been an increasing problem with DOT staff. It's not just this instance. In recent years, um, they have pulled the rug out from under us because the left hand doesn't speak to the right hand and it is incredibly, I, I mean, I'm sure we aren't the only county that's gotten burned on that. Um, and I, frankly, I think someone needs to, I don't know, some higher level intervene because it seems like they're not functioning very well. I feel terrible for the county and the developer in this situation. This is 100% I think a DOT problem.
Mr. Chairman, quick question.
Yes, Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Uh, question would be, uh, with the expertise in the room, state's attorney, uh, water board chairman and our planning and zoning person, worst-case scenario, five, 10 years down the line, maybe more, the system wasn't properly maintained and there's some type of failure. Or we have to go in and repair it. Does the county then, because I know probably the first place it would land is on the water board desk. Is it the county commission or the water board or who would have the ability then to special assess the subdivision to repair this uh storm water management plan?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zachmeyer, unless Mr. Copy has a different opinion, I believe that the water board, Water Resource District does have the ability to special assess. And the reason I know that is because we've had to do it before, primarily with the uh dredging project on Squareview Creek at the mouth of the river. There's also an area up there that's called the Zachmeyer Critical Area that is a drainage system that covers um a vast part of the Enslot subdivisions, ends up outflowing into the, into the river, but it's a fairly extensive project. And, and there we do have a very small special assessment each year for the people that are affected by that. Those funds are collected and earmarked, so to speak, uh, specifically for any improvements that would ever need to be made to that Zachmeyer Critical Area treatment, uh, drainage system. So in other words, we don't commingle those funds. They might be in the same account, but we account for them separately from our, our general funds.
So that poses a question tying in with Commissioner Zachmeyer's is if the county authorizes this agreement, then the county can direct the Water Resource Board. Would that be correct?
The Water Resource Board is pretty much autonomous other than their uh budget from the county commission. But on something like this, storm water, they, they, they would be the first board to.
Take action.
I, I, I think so. I think they would be probably within their authority to do so. You know, county commission could ask them to look into it or take action. I don't believe the county would have the authority to, county commission wouldn't have the authority to actually order it.
I, I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
But uh, you know, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, with the current makeup of our Morton County Water Board and the expertise that is on that board, if there was a problem, I would have full faith and confidence that they would know how to address it and they would address it very well. I have total and complete faith in that board.
Irrelevant to the topic, to, to the conversation, but Wade or Abe, this is designed for 100-year or is this designed for a 500-year? 100-year? Okay.
Which we, we had a six-inch rain event last fall, which is over 100.
And it dominated very well.
And it worked.
With the block.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know, would Mr. Copy, uh, state, state's attorney Copy, uh, be willing to give an opinion on this?
Yeah.
And specifically about the uh, the authority to assess?
Mr. Chairman, and I just want to echo Natalie's sentiments about, welcome back, Jackie. Good to see you. Um, but then also going to uh Mr. Bachmeyer's earlier question as to whether the state's attorney would agree with uh his opinion that they could s- special assess, yes, they could do that. Because you had to ask that question earlier. And then um, now the question becomes, Mr. Tocash?
Yeah.
What was the question again?
My, my question was, uh, which governing body has the, the ability to assess and, and can they?
can they assess for any damages, uh, and maintenance that we're performing in that, in that subdivision?
Well, I would, without researching, you know, the, uh, the statutes, I would just say generally the county would have the ability to do that.
Yeah. Thank you.
But, um, with regards to the, the agreement, yeah, I would advise against entering into that, as it now reads. Just a question, is there any precedent for what we've got here?
I've never seen it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a question then for, for Abe or for Natalie is if, if we push this back to the DOT with, with our requested action, how much time is going to be lost for the developer?
Abe can come up and talk to me, or talk to, but I think basically DOT, they're not going to do anything with this. Like if there, if there isn't a public entity signing on with the language they've provided, which is very open-ended and undetailed as you would want if you were going to step into a liability situation, uh, and they don't have to care, you know, that it has no, very little detail in it. Um, they're not, DOT is not resurrecting this on their own. Um, the developer would be the one asking again if they could, um, get that ditch block removed. If, um, the answer is no from this commission, the developer will proceed simply to redesign this whole stormwater system, because that would be their option. Right? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, if, if the answer is no, we are going to be back at redesigning the system. With the redesign of the system, I'm going, we won't need a permit. It will pretty, if we leave that ditch block in, it's the only reason for this is to remove that ditch block and change that water flow. That, and make sure that that system is maintained. If we go back, redesign our system, and don't plan on re- removing that ditch block, I'm going to get an email saying, you're good to go, and we're done. But I have to redesign, and the fact of redesign and re- restructure and reconstruct a couple ponds that are already in place.
And that's going to be pretty much this whole construction season.
Yes.
Yeah. But, but again, Mr. Chair, I just, I scratched my head when I looked at that. It just doesn't make sense for it to be there.
Well, yeah.
I mean, natural flow of water, just a natural flow of water without the engineering.
And we just said, we had a six-inch rain event that, you know, if we could have pushed that water on the west side instead of the east side, would have been even better than what it was, and it handled it already. So where are we going with 100 year? It's not much different.
Right. And, and again, taking the pressure off the property owners on the east side.
Mm-hmm.
So just to elaborate a little bit in my opinion, so this, either way, if we did a development here, we're going to go through and get a stormwater. We're going to get it approved by, by the county. You're going to get the subdivision approved. You're going to get all that, and even in that situation, no ditch block, no permit from the state, if something happened, you're still going to have that liability as the county be, if the HOA disbands.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's, it's the same scenario either way in my eyes.
If we would leave that ditch block in there, in that culvert, the dirt work and everything that's been done right now, I'm assuming is going to negatively affect the people on the east side of the road?
Not currently until everything's built out completely and adds all the new homes, add more, more flow and more water and everything like, like that, or being, uh, and to be honest, it's, it's still going to be built, we just don't know yet because we haven't gone down that road to redesign it, so we don't know exactly. Obviously, I try to keep as much as possible that's already built in place and modify the minimal amount to try to do it. However, that is, I'm guessing it's the middle pond and the east pond, and we're going to have to add a ditch from that ditch block culvert over to the new road of Honey Loop over there. I think that's what it's called. I don't remember what that name, street name is, sorry. You guys know what I mean. So, eh, it can be looked at. It, it has not been estimated on how much it would cost to re- reconstruct or anything like that. It's, it's, I'm sure we'll find a way to do it. I, I just haven't been directed by the developer, my client, to go down that, go down that rabbit hole to see what needs to be done, so.
And again, to, to answer Commissioner Tocash's question, current configuration, it accommodated that 100-plus-year event last year. However, you intensify that by putting developments in there, the homes, the shops, the enhanced rooftops, the enhanced drainage that's coming off of that.
That's going to add a lot more water once everything's being built out, so.
Right.
At that time, the way, the way it's set up, uh, it did hold up very well in last, last fall storm. We didn't even have a culvert in one of the ponds, so the emergency spillway actually did overflow into that, into that dr- ditch block. But, uh, the point of the maintenance per year, um, an estimate is five to 10 grand for five years for the HOA, and that's really the cost of, of, of an engineer like myself to go out and inspect the entire system, draw up a report, and then do the minor maintenance that I find. You know, if there's a little washout here, some sediment here or there, receding of some areas, that sort of thing, so minor, minor maintenance. Large, large storms, it's, the system's meant to take all the way up to a 100-year storm. We designed it for both the six-hour and the 10, and the 24-hour 100-year storm. Uh, the state actually makes us go further than what we typically do, and actually have to evaluate it at the 25-year storm and the 50-year storm as well, uh, on different hour, hour storms. Uh, so it was a very intense stormwater management report since the state right away is involved. It really, it really held up really well, knowing that it wasn't completely finished yet. But like you said, without the homes adding all that extra water, all the pavement, all the driveways and stuff like that, once that's added up, there will be more water going through. So, to put it in perspective, on that, on that east side, the way it's designed right now, we drop, the pre-flow going to that neighbor to the south is 123 CFS, cubic feet per second, in a 100-year 24-hour storm. With the current way it's designed, we're dropping that to 42 CFS. We're dropping that about 81 CFS. Two-thirds CF of, of the water that would go to that southerly properly, we would reroute and compensate in that west property.
If you're able to fulfill the design.
If I'm, be able to fulfill. If not, then I need to go back to the drawing board, and I can keep that 123 CFS going to that neighbor.
Basically dropping it a third, two-thirds.
Yeah, and that, and that's to allude on what Wade has said, as he's had multiple complaints from that neighbor. We had concerns brought up from that neighbor while we were doing this development about trying to reduce the water flow through his yard.
I just can say for any of the Commissioners that haven't been up and driven through that, that project, uh, sooner that can be completed, the better, because everything is wide open. It's very sandy material, it's blowing, there, there's going to be sediment, the ponds are going to be filled up in a hurry if we get heavy rains.
Correct.
So...
And we are, we are moving forward. We're still installing water main. We're, we're going to work in the areas that wouldn't be affected by this, you know, if we have to redesign. Uh, we are lowering the water main on Square Butte Road. Uh, we are, uh, the state required us to realign Square Butte Road on the west side to do a S curve in to try to T, or to try to do a 90-degree angle. And so that all that, once that water main on the north end can be lowered, we're going to continue with that because that has nothing to do with this watershed. Uh, we're going to continue on with what we're permitted to do. So it's, right now, it's just we can't remove that ditch block through that permit.
Any other questions?
Not yet. Not yet, Abe. Randy?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. There's a few things that I'd want to go over. Mr. Copy, as far as inherent risk, I think, uh, the county inheres, inherits a certain level of risk when we approve of any type of subdivision or road. There's some risk internally that I'm thinking that county would have to assume regardless, and that's where specials come in, or, you know, everything's built to county specs, the roads, the stormwater, all these ponds. So let's say if, uh, we did a development and there was no association or stormwater maintenance agreement, and maybe that road was not built to county specs, at that point, I'm guessing it would be the county's responsibility to fix that road at that point because they approved the subdivision. So what I'm basically getting at is the, the, the risks on this, um, on the county from a liability standpoint, it would take a cataclysmic event to, uh, total destruction of that area to eliminate 46 separate landowners that are all financially independent from one another. Some are bankers, some are power plant workers, some are grocery store owners and all that. So for them to totally fail as an association, the chance of that is pretty slim to none because within the association, association bylaws, we would put, uh, liens against properties. The association, let's say if one of the 46 would not pay their dues, the other 45 would pay the due, the, the $1,000 a year, what Abe is saying, and then potentially the $5,000 every five years to clean out the silt from the ponds and this and that. And granted, when we get, we're almost on the top of the hill. Dan Dorschmidt's on the other side of the hill. We're really close to the top of the hill, so we ain't getting a massive amount of stormwater through this area because it's at the peak of the hill. And, um, so basically, I, I, I believe that, you know, if, if it was five, um, $5,000 to $10,000, it'd be basically $200 per lot in a five-year span. The cost is, is, uh, pretty negligible, but again, for that association to fail, it would require 46 separate entities, people, families that would have total failure, which, you know, the world coming to an end, maybe another COVID deal. I don't know what the case would be at that point, then, you know, I think the county would have a lot of other things to contend with, and the level of risk, I just, we take it, this was the first development in Morton County's history that there's been actually a stormwater, um, maintenance agreement. And this was planned by Natalie to minimize the state's, or the county's responsibility as a county, because normally there's, when you guys approve developments, there's no stormwater maintenance plans, which has finely detailed bylaws and all this. We've worked on for over six months with attorneys, with the engineers, with everything to get this great agreement created and got approved and got through to put the, the risk of the stormwater maintenance back on to the developer and then the association. So I just want to go over, Natalie said we should discuss some of the financial impact, what Honey Hills does. We know that Abe said it could be about $10,000, you know, with, with the $1,000 a year and in five years, $5,000 to clean up the pond, and that would be, again, we're going to have a lot of silt runoff right now because upstream, we got open dirt, and we need to get in vegetation. Once there's open, once there's vegetation, there should be minimal impact. We took the 100-year flood last year, or that rain event last year, and we don't have no grass or nothing, and it still handled it. It was a pretty amazing system, and the DOT, uh, for the last two years, you know, was just, uh, 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 they were really happy with what Abe did for their design of the stormwater pond. But basically, I had a, um, short-term and long-term economic impact for Morton County, and I'll just give a summary. This was done by Common Sense Accounting on May 2nd. Basically, it, it's going to create, uh, construction spending of 33.375 million to the county, construction jobs, 159, um, full-time jobs. Local spending from them, construction jobs being created for this county would be 10 to 16.7, 7 million. Annual resident spending, and this is based on the, the number of residents, 135 new residents in this area, um, 2.7 million dollars per year. Annual property taxes, 491,000 per year, and, uh, total annual impact would be four to five million per year. As a risk reward, looking at that from a potential $5,000 to $10,000 liability on the county, if the association would go completely bankrupt, 46 financially independent people would fail, and then that burden on the county for the $5,000 to $10,000 to clean out some silt, I, the cost is negligible from the millions upon millions of dollars that this is creating and the half a million in, in, uh, additional tax revenue for the county. This additional tax revenue for this county will help in smaller areas in the county that don't have a great tax base, that they can't afford spending, so this is a great development for Morton County. Based on, uh, Anselt 11th to the south there, them homes range from 6 to 750,000. I foresee 800-plus thousand-dollar homes here, um, nicer, um, but it should be a great development, and I'm concerned that if you guys don't support this as a liability side, I'm concerned that if we have to go back to the state, they might still want you to support the next rendition. And the problem with supporting the next rendition, by the time we go through the approval process, Abe does a redesign, which could take a month on his end, and go through the DOT to get that stormwater pond, go through the county board, water board, all that to get that new revision, um, approved, we're talking, puts us into a fall project. Well, of course, it's hard to seed grass when you know you're going to tear it all back up. Um, and then again, it would put additional water pressure on Jesse here instead of, on a, on a big event. Water running for four hours through his yard, it might be eight to 12 hours because we have to hold back a larger amount of water, which it would dump out at a slower rate through smaller pipes. But, um, yeah, I guess, uh, is there any questions?
Any questions for Randy?
No.
Thank, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just reading in the, type of this document. The Homeowners Association, section 5s and section 6, the mechanics are in there for the association. Mechanics are in there. Basically, it even says that subject property will not be conveyed until it's, until the outstanding assessment's been paid in current. And I'm also thinking in my, the rural development that I'm in, 10 acres from my parcel, but I have a property owner two down. He, that property owner is subject to a 24-inch culvert. I don't know what the exact drainage area is, but a rain event, half his yard, 10 acres, is completely consumed with water. And he calls me, well, it was, it was done by engineered specs, but there's no water management plan associated with that development. So again, kudos for, for that effort with this one, and when you're looking at the development, that's a lot of mechanics in there. It's a very well-designed system. And I've done a few developments.
Anything else? So Mr. Copy, you made the comment that you wouldn't support the way this was written. Is, was there something that you wanted in there, something different, or what was your reason?
When I was asked by Natalie to look at this, I looked at it, and, uh, I don't think it's a good idea for the county to sign on to be liable for the future, for what, you know, the DOT will not, uh, agree to. And then they're, they're basically, you know, making us sign this, and, um, we had no part in it, in, in the drafting of it, but we're, we're, we're responsible, so, I mean, you don't have to take my advice, and, uh, I guess I moved previous question, maybe we should just have a motion to see if it...
Would we be liable, if the association failed, we'd have to take... Would we be liable, if the association failed, we'd have to take care of it anyway? So at what point do we not have any liability? As long as the association's there, they're taking care of it.
Well, by signing this, we have liability. And what I do is I'm holding up the agreement that the DOT has presented.
As long as the association is there, it makes no difference. Once it's gone, then it falls to us, which it does anyway.
However, this is a document that you would sign on as Chairman of the Board, and my advice would be do not.
Mr. Chairman, I looked at this, maybe I'm being a little elementary on this, but I looked at this similarly to a sponsorship for a grant, and a little bit of a bigger perspective, we understand that. But similarly, as a sponsorship of a grant, the responsibility of the grant administration is going to be held on the principal, in this case, MBR Properties. And again, the way the bylaws are written, that's who the executioner is, is the Homeowner Association through MBR Properties, or through the development itself. But as stated minutes ago, it still comes down to the county's responsibility at some point in time to address it.
Mr. Chairman, I could ask a question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Capi, I've, I know you don't have this document right in front of you, but part of the covenants and the Homeowners Association, there's a statement in here that lot owners are notified that Morton County is not responsible for maintenance of Honey Hill Estates' stormwater drainage system. And again, I haven't had time to read through all this. The signature dates on these documents, does that make a difference? Because my understanding is this is, these homeowner association bylaws have been filed already, and if we sign a document after that, are we superseding any of this stuff that's in there?
We could be. And just the way that this is worded, as it was presented to me by Natalie, you know, in the packet, this is not, I don't advise, again, you know, for you to sign this, to sign on to this agreement.
And our challenge here at the Board is we've got, or a commission, we've got a project that's half-done.
And if there is a responsibility for the county to do cleanup, like I say, if there's a rain event, and then we could, you know, move with a special assessment district to finance that. We don't have to sign this to reinforce that duty.
So, again, the question, by not signing it, what does that do as far as removing the ditch block? It can't. Correct. Which means have to go into, as mentioned earlier, reengineering, readdressing the drainage, trying to reduce the impacts of the downstream, specifically on the east side.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, here's one other thing. Additional liability from the neighbor over on the east side.
Yeah.
May I speak?
Yes.
My name is Dan Dorschmidt. I'm the landowner to the west, and I just want to point out a couple fails, maybe a little bit, that, one is the fact that the landowners surrounding weren't notified of this, and Jesse Hare, who is going to be greatly impacted by whatever decisions made here tonight, I think is a shame that he hasn't had a voice in this and ability to come, and he couldn't come tonight. And Randy, to say that 100-year flood event last year didn't have an impact on anybody, go talk to Jesse, and you should have been out there that night, because it flooded up to his shop building, it was a mess, and several washouts on the railroad track. But I think, in some ways, I give kudos because there was a stormwater plan, but the original plan had multiple, and I'm talking tens of multiple issues with it, that were corrected, were modified as we went along. But all of that was predicated on taking this ditch block out, and we've been talking about this for the year and a half that was going through the planning process. And I think we made a fail in the fact that we started this process without all those pieces in place, and we knew that the ditch block was a huge, huge impediment, and the whole stormwater plan is predicated on this. And it is a complex water runoff situation up there. It's steep, it's ugly, and yes, it's all dirt right now, and, but I'm afraid that, truthfully, once houses go in, you're going to have more hard surface, you're going to have more driveways, you're going to have more rooftops, and the runoff from pasture versus the runoff of a development, I believe we're underestimating what's going to run up there. So I don't really care, other than I'm a taxpayer too, as whether we support this or not. I'm just saying, there's a bigger issue here in the fact that we failed in the planning portions of this project.
It was stated several times that removing that ditch block takes water from the east side, moves it to the west, and lowers the water flow to the east side, so...
It does, I agree. Removing the ditch block... I agree, removing the ditch block is really the best answer here. I get that. But at the same time, I don't know that it should be us as taxpayers that are responsible for a fail in the planning side of this, right? I think we should have had that in place, if that's what we were predating our water plan on, or we should have had a modified water plan from the start. Donnie Ansel and Donnie Shaw tried to get that ditch block removed years and years and years ago, and DOT has always said no to that, always had. And because it used to flood across there, through that culvert, and flood down Donnie Shaw's driveway all the time. And so this has been talked about for, way before I moved out there 15 years ago. And DOT said no then, and I'm guessing that's why they're saying no now, and they know that there'll be a lot of runoff coming off that west side, going down their ditch, and I can see why DOT doesn't want to take responsibility for it, in my opinion.
Natalie's going to have to go pretty quick.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, you know, don't have to like it, but I do believe state's attorney's advice to us is sound, it's now on the record. And if this was ever some type of failure down the road, somebody's going to say, you were warned and you were advised by your attorney not to sign it, and you did, so now you got far more liability. I can see that argument being made. And even though I have total faith and confidence in our water board, it's pretty hard to go against the state's attorney's advice. Don't have to like it, but that's going to be brought out in court. Your state's attorney advised no, and you did it anyway, if this was in court. Mr. Chairman, I'd have a motion if you're ready.
Anybody else have any discussion? He hasn't made a motion yet, before he says if I'm ready. I'm ready.
And just one other thing, the surrounding landowners, the agenda was printed, everything was done legally. There was no requirement to be sending out notice letters, as there is when there are subdivisions that are coming on.
Or public hearing.
There was no public hearing. Everything was done correctly. To have special notice isn't required. That being said, though, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to deny the request of Honey Hills Estates for Morton County to take liability for any damages that may arise, and co-sign a reapplication to North Dakota Department of Transportation for a drainage permit within Highway 1806 RightofWay, located at the North Dakota Highway 1806 RightofWay in the northeast corner of Section 32, Township 140 North, Range 81 West, for the purpose of discharging drainage from the residential development known as Honey Hills Estates 1 and 2, addition into the existing DOT highway on the finding and advice of the Morton County State's Attorney.
I move to deny the request from the developer of Honey Hills Estates for county to co-sign reapplication to North Dakota DOT for drainage permit within Highway 1806 RightofWay, and the county to take on the liability for any damages that may arise. We're going to do a roll call vote.
Discussion.
After discussion, so just so you know, I'm going to do that. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would question if, upon state's attorney's objection to the existing document, if our state's attorney be willing to, and if DOT is still requiring jurisdictional sign-off, if our state's attorney be willing to communicate with DOT and come to agreeable language.
Come up with something, we can work together. Four weeks.
It's still government.
Chairman, Mr. Morell, yes, I could do that. I can't guarantee any results, but...
Then I would, I would propose an amendment to the motion, that we deny it with the intent that our state's attorney take disagreement to DOT and work it so it's favorable on state's attorney's opinion.
I'll second amendment. Getting that, Andy?
Yeah.
And if we can have discussion with that, I would question if there, if we can identify a reasonable timeframe.
Yes, and then also, I suppose what I would, from what I'm seeing in this agreement, it would be at paragraph eight, we would want to take out the responsibility of Morton County there, and at paragraph 10, at the end of that one, at the cost of Morton County. Because that's what was hanging me up.
So again, understanding the speed of government, if it'd be reasonable that within a month, we can have something back on our desk.
Sure. What do you got, with the amendment?
I'm getting there.
Abe, you want to say something?
Yeah.
While Andy does this, I'll allow a little bit of...
Let me find it. So what I proposed to the state was to take those two phrases out, and say after the completion in number eight, "After the completion of the project, the maintenance of the detention facility shall be the responsibility of Honey Hills Homeowners Association. If the HOA in default of their responsibilities, Morton County has the authority to make the necessary emergency maintenance improvements and assess the cost directly to the lot owners by the bylaws of Honey Hills Estates Homeowners Association per the document number 521187." Also in number 10, I did the same thing, trying to, and say, "Changes to the area at the cost of Honey Hills Homeowners Association." If the, and make the statement, "If HOA goes in default of their responsibilities, Morton County has the authority to make the necessary emergency maintenance improvements and assess the cost directly to the lot owners per the bylaws of Honey Hills Estates Homeowners Association." That was before we got the denial letter.
Well, and maybe, excuse me, talking into the mic here, maybe coming and dealing with our state's attorney might...
It might have more...
It might have something. Al's going to have to get his weights out and get ready.
I don't know. I don't know. I just wanted to bring that up because I did send that week before we got the denial.
Maybe Abe, you can give that copy to the state's attorney too, then.
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment language, hopefully this would fit the poetry. Morton County State's Attorney has requested to work with the Honey Hills Estates developer to author a document that would better suit or gain the approval of the North Dakota Department of Transportation and limit or remove the liability to Morton County.
I would probably still need to incorporate working with DOT. Our state's attorney working with Honey Hills Development...
Are we removing the liability or just some language? I don't know. You got a second on that?
Yeah, I did.
So to add, Morton County State's Attorney has requested to work with the Honey Hills Estates developer and the North Dakota Department of Transportation to author a document that would better suit or gain the approval of the North Dakota Department of Transportation and limit or remove the liability to Morton County.
Yes.
Okay. Good with that language?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? We'll do roll call, like I said. Motion, amendment was made by Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
And myself is yes. Now we're back to the motion to deny...
Motion as amended.
As amended.
As amended, yep. And I'm not going to try and read yours back again.
Mr. Chairman, would you want me to read?
I would like you to read that, yes.
Okay. Move to deny the request of Honey Hills Estates for Morton County to take liability for any damages that may arise, and co-sign reapplication to the North Dakota Department of Transportation for a drainage permit within Highway 1806 RightofWay, located at North Dakota Highway 1806 in the northeast corner of Section 32, Township 140 North, Range 81 West, for the purpose of discharging drainage from the residential development known as Honey Hills Estates First and Second Additions into the North Dakota Department of Transportation highway on the finding that, and advice of the Morton County State's Attorney. The Morton County State's Attorney has requested to work with the Honey Hills Estates developer and the North Dakota Department of Transportation to author a document that would better suit or gain the approval of the North Dakota Department of Transportation and limit or remove the liability to Morton County.
Did the rest of the commissioners follow all that?
No.
Read it again. No, we're good. Is there any discussion on the motion as amended? Any discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
Let's see. Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
And myself is a no. Motion carries four to one. All right. Natalie left, so I guess she can't add anymore to our plate tonight. Mr. LaFlore, you are up.
All right, I got a little lighter one for you, just 221 abatements today to deal with.
I'm glad you grouped them.
Okay, so the first one up is the big one. This is abatement 6803 through 7019. This is for the mobile homes for 2024 for the primary residence credit. I think my agenda item explained it pretty well, but it was a timing issue that the legislature didn't realize when they passed the legislation, that the bills for the mobile homes go out way before the primary residence credits get approved. So the only way to do it is through a refund. That will happen again for 2025, but in this current session, they did pass a fix for this. There will be an extra mobile home-only registration period with a deadline of September 1st. I don't know when they're going to open that, but the deadline is September 1st, that is, for the 2026 mobile homes, so that we can put it on their statements rather than doing the refund. So we have to do this for '24, we'll have to do it again for '25. There'll be an extra one for registration for only mobile homes for the primary residence credit. After that, it'll be fixed, and they'll register and it'll be on their next statement, just like it is for real estate. So got to do this a couple times. So very long list of them, 217 of them. Two of, these are the refund amounts, because this is just a peer refund. Two of them are zero, as noted in the text. They had a previous homestead abatement that was approved. As a result of refunding on that homestead, it picked up the primary residence credit and also refunded that. So there's no additional refund, but I'm still having you approve them, just to mix them in with the rest.
Ms. Chair, I move that we approve abatement number 6803 through abatement number 7019 as refunds for 2024 mobile home primary residence credits.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatements 6803 through 7019 for mobile home primary residence credit abatements. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next one up is abatements for homestead. Ignore the subject line, I forgot to update the numbers there. It is abatement 7020 through 7023. There's just four of them. There was one in each unit, but I did keep the breakdown, so you have one for Morton County for '24, one for the city of Mandan for '23, one for the city of Mandan for '24, and one mobile home for '25.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve homestead abatements 7020 for Morton County 2024, 7021, City of Mandan 2023, 7022 for the city of Mandan 2024, 7023 mobile homes 2025.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 7020 for Morton County 2024, 7021 City of Mandan 2023, 7022 City of Mandan 2024, and 7023 Mobile Home 2025 for homestead abatements. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, just a quick warning, next meeting, they also approved for 2024 for the trusts. We did have almost 90 trusts that the state gave us that had been approved by them. So I'll be bringing those abatements next meeting to you guys to approve those for the trusts, where they went back and picked up '24, because initially, they were denied.
You might have to help me sign some of these.
So another batch, not quite as big as this one, but another big batch coming next time.
All right. All right, Don, the documentation for the joint detention center bonds.
Okay, so the much anticipated documents that we've been waiting for for about six months are finally in front of us. So they had to have, I don't know who did it, bond counselor, someone who had to actually do a calculation to say, okay, this is how much is needed in escrow, so that the payments can be made in the future on these bonds. So first, they were going to pay them off early, realized we are paying a very low interest rate on them, and in today's interest rate world, we can be money ahead by just escrowing the money and have the escrow make these payments, okay? So we have three documents that are in your packet. The first one is the escrow agreement, which both counties have to sign. Burleigh County did approve this and sign it on Monday. And so this is just the escrow agreement, saying the money is going to go into escrow, and then the payments for the bonds will come out of that escrow. And then the second item, after a few pages there, it says amendment to joint powers agreement. This one, too, was approved by Burleigh County earlier this week, and they signed it, and this is just amending our joint powers agreement. This actually spells out in, on the backside of the page, on number two, ownership. So Burleigh County went ahead and they sent me the documents they used, but they calculated how much we have contributed from sales tax to make the payments and how much Burleigh County has, and to no surprise, it came out very close to what originally the percentages were. So based on those percentages of payments, the Burleigh County ownership is 83.07, Morton County is 16.93. And so that's that document. And then the next one is just a resolution for Morton County. Burleigh County had their own resolution, and this resolution is providing for bond redemption. And it's just kind of reiterating what the whole process was when the bonds were issued and so forth. And the last paragraph on this document is authorizing myself to take any additional action to defees these bonds. So we just need a motion to approve these three documents and authorize the chair to sign each of them.
And the last one, if we do, are we doing them separate? Or can we do them all together?
I think we can do them all together.
We'll do a roll call, because you need a roll call vote. Ally on that last one.
Just identifying what each document is.
Yep, so the first document is the escrow agreement, the second one is amendment to the joint powers agreement, and then the last one is the resolution providing for bond redemption.
I guess I think we should have three separate motions, just to keep it clear.
I think you're, yeah, we're good. Do that.
And then I should state, once, so there's a surplus of money, so we've been, you know, collecting that half-cent sales tax up until April 1st. And so Burleigh County and us both had more money in those funds at Bank of North Dakota than was needed to put into this escrow. So as soon as these get sent in, and the Bank of North Dakota receives them and processes them, then they will release that money to us, which is the money that's going to be a segue into what Kyle's going to talk about next, that we're going to use to do the improvements in the law enforcement center. Because if you remember back when this was initially approved by the voters, 90% of the sales tax collections went into the fund to make the bond payments, 10% went into a fund to remodel the old jail. So this got paid off early, as we're talking about, so that sales tax collections were way more than what was anticipated back when this was done. And so we thought we had X dollar, X number of dollars to work with over there when we remodeled. And so not everything that should have been done was done, because on limitations of funds. And so now, we're going to use the excess here to finish up over there, which is what was approved by the voters, okay? So the 1% then will start coming directly to us, since that has nothing to do with the bonds. And if we didn't have this done, they might have still kept those collections. But that 1%, but, will start coming to us, but that is, there's a two-month lag on sales tax collections till when the state remits them to us. So merchants have till the end of May to send in their money to the state for collections, so it won't be until probably July, when we get the payment for the actual April collections. So we'll talk about that when we get to budget time.
Okay, so we're going to do these separate. So the first one will be the escrow agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we have the chairman sign and approve the escrow agreement. Is that all you want?
Between Burleigh and Morton County.
Between Burleigh and Morton County.
Yep. And the Bank of North Dakota.
And to include the Bank of North Dakota. Thank you, Commissioner Morell.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to have the chairman sign the escrow agreement between the Morton County, Burleigh County, and the Bank of North Dakota. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Next, we will do the, got to get the wording right here, joint powers agreement, the amendment to the joint powers agreement.
Ms. Chair, I move that we authorize the chairman to sign the joint powers agreement between Burleigh County and Morton County with regards to the Burleigh-Morton Detention Center.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to have the chairman sign the joint powers agreement for the detention center between Burleigh and Morton County. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself is yes. And then the last one is the resolution providing for bond redemption.
Move that we authorize the chair to sign the resolution providing for bond redemption. Leave it at that.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to have the chair sign for the agreement for the bond redemption. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Motion carries. Okay, is that all you had on that, Auditor Ron? Sheriff Kirkmire, want to come up and give us your spiel? Or your stink tonight?
All right. Good evening. There's some things that need to be figured out on, as we're going along here, but my biggest thing I want to bring to the attention tonight is that, as Auditor Ron mentioned, there is some issues over at the LEC that have been, that have been there, but have not been corrected. And one is, I'll just hit this real quick, and it's with generator, heat pumps, or boilers that are over there that I've gotten bids for, and now that some tariffs come on, I'm trying to re-up them and get them correct. So everything has gone up from what it was before. We're talking anywhere from 5% to 10% to higher on it. So I'm waiting for, there's a few things I'm trying to gather with that. So I didn't send in all of the documentation on those yet, and I'm hoping by the next meeting that we could probably get those, so you can review them, but we're, and then find out what, how much sales tax is actually left in there, because we're around that 850,000 to 900,000 mark of costs for doing what we should do at the moment over there. But tonight, my main thing, why I asked to get on the agenda tonight afterwards, is that there is a, we have sewage lift pumps that are down in the LEC in the basement that are failed, failing and have failed, and therefore, we are getting some back smells and stuff like that back into the LEC. So therefore, it is, I'd like to do this, and that is to, the quote that I gave you, is to remove and replace those sewer lift pumps that are in the basement for the cost that is stated there. And this, my recommendation would be to come out of the sales tax, and then we'll figure out how much is there, or with the 1%, what we can do to make sure we're covered on the rest of the requests that I'll have, if that makes sense.
Don, does that work?
Yeah, the lady from Bank of North Dakota told me there was 680,000 in that fund, but there was a little bit more in another fund, so I don't think it's going to be anywhere near that, over 800,000, but we'll talk about that when we know for sure.
Right. When we get to those numbers and then know where we're at, so we can decide what we can do, or if the other sales tax money that's coming in started April 1st, if any of that can be, you know, we're just, we had to figure that out yet, so that's kind of where we're at.
Okay.
But the lift pumps, we need to get fixed sooner than later. And I was going to include, you know, all of this in one package, but it's...
You know, it may be better to use the LEC building fund for these.
Yep.
That'd be my recommendation, because I don't have the sales tax money yet, and I really don't know how much it's going to be, where it's going to go, and yeah.
Okay. And there would be enough in that LEC fund to cover this as well.
Get it taken care of.
Yes, to get it taken care of.
We would just have to call a meeting of the LEC Advisory Board, and then it would come back here again to get approved after the LEC Advisory Board approves it.
But, it would, but that's going to delay it, you know, that's my whole issue, is delaying this before it gets...
Well, I mean, if we can get a meeting of the Advisory Board before the next commission meeting, then it would just be two weeks out. If they have to order stuff, I would tell them, go ahead and order the parts.
And I guess I would find out from them tomorrow on when they can do it, you know, at that point. That would be the next step or whatever.
Yeah, they might not be able to do it for three weeks.
It's possible, yeah.
Right. Because, again, same story is that they probably have to bring in parts, and that's going to take time, at least, whatever, it's going to take time. But I would agree that comes through the LEC building maintenance fund.
Are you on that? Is he? Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay. Any further questions for Sheriff Kirkmire on what we're doing here?
Then as soon as I get the other, I mean, the other info, we'll get all that together and find out where our numbers are at.
I don't think we need a motion here, then, actually, it's going to go to the LEC one, right?
Correct.
We don't even need to start here.
Correct.
It'll come back to us after you guys are done.
Yep.
But like Auditor Ron said, go ahead and get them guys started and see where we're at. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes. Just, I just want to give you an update, too. From before, we talked about the grant from the court facilities grant and the X-ray machine that has been purchased, it has been in here, actually. It's been, it showed up here last week, and it has been installed. So the new one is up and operational at this point, just FYI.
Good, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Morell?
Again, Commissioners, this is going back a couple meetings where we agreed to set up a retreat. So we had an initial agenda, and I pushed it out to department heads and solicited additional topics for agenda. Received a few of them, three of them to be exact. I met with Commissioner Bame yesterday, I think it was, we talked through, two days ago, whatever it was, we talked through.
It was yesterday, I still feel it.
So coming back with the agenda for this retreat, again, scheduled for June 13. The intention is with Ms. Brunz from the NDSU Extension, looking at a 10 o'clock start.
17.
17, what did I say, 13?
I thought 13.
Oh, I'm sorry. June 17.
That's one of your memorial wall meetings, I think, on 13th.
But portfolios, the agenda topics are portfolios with, again, the intent for this is to allow us to have conversation without setting policy. is to allow us to have conversation without setting policy. And having the entire commission as part of the dialogue being facilitated by another person mainly to help engage the dialogue, engage the conversation, extract the information, get people to think beyond what they're normally would discuss. So with that being said, again, portfolios, some of the topics for consideration would be, you know, what areas have portfolios, what areas do not have portfolios, which areas do we see a need for oversight? Is there a possibility for reconfiguration or combining or realigning existing portfolios? Again, just, just topics for discussion. But I did arrange for a call with Jody Brunz to talk through these, and Commissioner Bame will clue you in, that was just recent, tonight, so if you're able to join in on that, we can have that same conversation all the way through. Employment, another topic for discussion. Where are we at with turnover? Where are we at with benefits and pay versus private sector markets? What department positions are behind in market pay? What can we do to streamline positions or other job duties? Again, just big picture conversation, how we can think about what we can make our county, county government more efficient. Facilities, what is condition of existing facilities for Morton County? And it's not just this plant, but the highway department building, any other outbuildings that we have. How are we poised for growth needs for Morton County service demands and employee space? How are the buildings set for age and space accommodations? Is future the, the Brubaker apartment building, what would be intended use of that area, so on, so on? I know part of that's been in conversation before, but now we have a new commission. Finance taxation, what are the potential implications of the recent state legislative actions? How will that affect Morton County budgeting process? Because now state law is, well, as soon as it's signed, puts into play for August twenty-one, I'm sorry, August one, which takes in effect for this tax cycle. So we've got to look at how we're going to do our budgeting now. And ties back up with some of the other topics, maybe we have to cut staff, we don't know. Zoning, land development, this is one that was brought forward from one of the, one of our department heads, what are the impending needs for Morton County's growth pattern? How is the growth pattern reflected through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which Commissioner Zachmyer serves on that body? What areas not addressed by the MPO? What needs assessment for industrial park within Morton County? And that was a conversation that was given to me by the mayor of Mandan recently. What's the balance between rural residential growth and agricultural needs? Again, big picture conversations. Strategic plan, Morton County does have a strategic plan. It's about twenty-four pages long. It was authored, I don't know how many years back, but my understanding, it's been sitting on a, on a shelf and hasn't had an ownership on it. So looking at our strategic plan, how is it developed? How long ago? What level of stakeholder participation supporting the development? What are the benefits or detractors from developing a county-wide update to this existing document? Who'd be those stakeholders? And again, that one's actually a topic that's received comment from a few people that feel that we need to embody a better strategic plan for Morton County. So anyway, that being said, that is what I present for the agenda for the retreat, and ask that we approve it.
What is your timeframe on seventeenth? Is it the whole day?
Well, she wants to start no, no, earlier than ten o'clock. And looking at this, if we get, it's definitely got to be more than half a day. It's going to have to be more than half a day. So I think a ten o'clock start is probably a reasonable start, still have offer time for lunch.
Taco John's.
Sure. It's, it's a Tuesday.
Ah, yeah, okay.
And we just do it here in the meeting room. But the other part of this too is, of course, working with our department heads and bringing them in as such a matter experts, part of the conversation, because we are one team.
Questions? Remarks?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting.
Day? When do you guys meet?
Uh, one in the afternoon, one thirty in the afternoon.
And I am out of town that day.
That doesn't work very well.
It was more so balancing everybody's calendars.
Yep.
I'm just looking through her email.
Usually one to five or something?
It's usually one to two, sometimes three, but usually it's done in about an hour.
Okay, but Don's out of town anyway.
As of, back in March, again, this has been in wheels in motion since then, back in March, she had a June nine, which is the day before equalization meeting, June nine to seventeen, and a twenty-three. Could she have?
Do you think she still has those dates holding?
Who knows?
No.
I'm sure not.
I can ask, but.
I, I doubt it. I kept that seventeenth because I knew that was a hold date. I have a meeting date that day too, but I would just tell that meeting that I would, just can't be there.
I got fair board that night, so that wouldn't.
I have the twenty-third as a hold date too yet, so.
You got anything on twenty-third?
No.
If she's still open, I have it.
No.
The MPO.
Are you good on twenty-third?
I'm good.
I'll reach out to her, see if she can do the twenty-third.
That's at night, this is during the day.
Five thirty, we got the job.
But if the commission is fine with the agenda, we can lock that in, we just work with the date.
Correct. Don in town on the twenty-third?
Yeah, I'm at a CPA conference in Fargo that's on sixteenth and seventeenth.
Okay, so twenty-third would work better for you?
Okay, we have a motion on the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda for the impending Morton County Commission Retreat.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the impending date to be set Morton County retreat, commission retreat. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, does anybody have anything else? I could update, we had Ag Day yesterday, Morton County Ag Day. We know we were over two thousand without even having a count at the front door from nine to six. It was extremely busy, it was a beautiful day for it, and start planning for next year. So.
Did it order the same weather?
I, I'll put a call in, we'll see what happens. No guarantees.
See if it gets back ordered.
Yeah.
Last night was the first public input meeting for the Morton County War Dead Monument. It was in the Golden Nugget Saloon in New Salem. Tenance was not extremely strong, but the engagement was phenomenal. The response was phenomenal. We meet Monday in Flasher, next week, Monday the twelfth at Flasher, next week, Tuesday the thirteenth in Hebron, and then the last public input meeting would be May nineteenth here.
There's your thirteenth.
That might be. That might be where the mine was. There is a survey, this information is on the website, so if the public wants to, and the other Commissioners want to push it out as well, using our social media is out there also, but the website, if you do a Google search for Morton County War Dead Monument, it'll take you right to the page, and on there, halfway's in the middle of the website is the link that has the renderings, and in that same sentence is a link for the survey. So again, trying to quantify the responses from the people.
So the other, when you mentioned survey too, is also, there's a survey out there for anybody that's listening, or here on the twenty twenty-five Morton County, North Dakota Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. And I just have the link here, but if you, I think if you Google that.
Yeah, you can Google that, but also using social media is pushing the QR code as well.
There's a QR code out there as well, and if you get a chance, go ahead and fill it out. It doesn't take very long, it's pretty painless, but it's good information for us to develop our plan, which we have to do every five years anyway. According to get FEMA funding and everything else, we have to have that plan, so. Does anybody have anything else good for the order?
Move to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.